Good evening, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this business meeting to order. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll turn this over to Dr. Yanni for your superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I know that some of our community members are listening at home. I just, I am so proud for the entire, for the entire staff and for the amazing recognition that we received. Oyster Bay High School was ranked number 10 out of 500 schools according to a study in the 2021 Best Public High School in New York State. That's impressive. I want to say thank you to the entire staff. When you have a recognition of this caliber, it's not just a high school, it's Vernon, it's Theodore Roosevelt, it's an entire community, it's the parents and obviously the students are making this amazing place. The report came from an organization that consulted a panel of experts, each of whom had decades of experience in education and compared, believe it or not, 1,200 schools across the state and was based on four categories: college readiness, school experience, diversity, and teachers and staff. I'm so proud and so excited about this great accomplishment and I know, knowing the students that we have, knowing the staff that we have, that this is just the beginning. So, so proud and to the students, to my students listening at home, keep up the great work. You'll make this a special place to work and to be part of it. National Honor Society ceremonies are going very well, intended to this past week. I am touched by the preparation of the students, this speech and how they handle themselves. And I was on the soccer field and watching some of the students playing and then 10 minutes later, they were here giving a speech to the parents and to the teachers and it was just so nice to see that. To the parents watching at home, I have to say a big thank you. I'm around all the time and I see you waiting in the parking lot, driving them back and forth. I did that as a parent, but I give you a lot of credit. I see all the cars parked and then all of a sudden, there is a movement and you bring them from one location to another. You make this possible, you make this community the special place that it is and I thank you so much for that. Tonight, we're going to celebrate some young artists that are here tonight. Their last month was music, this month we have art and we have this amazing artwork that was put together. I know that nothing will stop Oyster Bay, even the pandemic. We had a virtual art gallery that I enjoyed and I'm sure a lot of the parents at home had the opportunity to see and enjoy that artwork. So tonight, we celebrate the work of the talented artists that we have over here. A little quick update on COVID. Things are going very well. If you, I wish you were here, but you see some of the tents that we put out there, so students are enjoying lunch outside, but things are going very well. All in-person instruction. We have been very diligent in our planning and at this point, even though there was an update on, from the New York State Health Department, we made some minor changes, but our district was very diligent in the planning, so there's not much changes at this point. We will continue to review, the documents are coming our way and obviously our focus is on September. Hopefully, everybody will be back to normal. Quick graduation update. There was a news that came out and when I saw the 500 number, I said, yes, one graduation and there was a little bit of, you know, the fine print. 500 can only happen if you have a venue that has a seating of 2,500. So, 20% of that obviously is the 500. We have a wonderful ceremony, a wonderful tradition in front of this beautiful school and the capacity is at 400, so 20, you know, but obviously we're looking at 50% of that, which was one of the regulation, part of the regulation. So, we will have our graduation ceremony and I have to thank Ms. Lasher and the entire administrative team, but she has been amazing, looking at everything, every angle, graduation, prom, ceremony. So, I know that she's watching this board meeting and I have to say a big thank you. It's a pleasure working with our, looking at all the regulation and looking at everything that's coming our way to give the students the best possible experience. So, right now, we have three graduation ceremonies set in place. One is all the students in front of the school, that's just the students, and then there is a parade, a beautiful parade that started last year and will continue. The street is going to be closed, they go to the beach, they would have a beautiful ceremony in the morning, and then two separate ceremonies with parents, one at 11 and one at 1:15, I believe, but more details will come. The most important thing, because I know that my daughter will ask me that question, can I graduate with my best friend? And the answer is yes, you can do that. And again, thank you to Ms. Lasher for not even blinking her eye. Somebody would have said, ah, that's too much to do it. She jumped in and said, not a problem and I'm very happy for that. Senior update, college acceptance. We received some wonderful news, some wonderful, amazing colleges and the most important thing is I'm so proud of all the students, all the sacrifices that they made as a parent. I know how stressful it is, the college application process and going and deciding. So, very, very proud of all the work that they have done. A little update on the assessment and Regents. This year is a little bit different. Assessment and the impact that the assessment has on our student has changed over the years. At the high school level, we will be administering New York State Regents Examination in Algebra, Earth Science, Living Environment, and ELA, English Language Arts, in June. No scores, there will be no scores included in the final grade calculation. All transcript will have an E for exemption, unless a student, we request to get that grade sent to the college. In addition, we'll have, remember, we had many more Regents, but June 15, 16, 18, and 21 would be regular days of instruction. At the 3-8 level, we will administer the grade through 3-3 assessment on the following dates, April 20, today was the first one, and 27, and May 4 would be the math, May 7, and the science is 7 and 8. The tests were cut back tremendously from the previous year and we see, the most important thing is, as the educational leader in this community, we see assessment as an opportunity to gather information about our students, how they doing, how they receiving the material, especially during this time where we had some interrupted instruction all around the state. And I just want you, I want the parents to know that my entire administrative team, and I know that Dr. Mohol did tremendous work, and I take tremendous pride in the high-quality education that makes this school a very special place. Assessment, it comes in many different forms and the state assessment is just one piece of the puzzle. Our instructional decision is based on multiple forms of assessment and all different types of assessment are viewed as a learning experience. It is extremely important that we support our instructional system by encouraging our students to view assessment as that part of that learning experience. Assessment is and will always be at Oyster Bay, one small piece of the puzzle in order to empower our students to achieve excellence and I think we're doing great on that. A little beds code update. If you look at the high school, right, Oyster Bay High School, it's 7 to 9. Right now, at the state, when we're reporting the data to the state, it goes together as 7 through 12. So, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 all together in. Dr. Mohol has done tremendous work, working with the state in creating two separate beds code. In other words, it's almost two separate, if you think about a car, it's almost like having two separate license plate. So, when the data goes up to the state, it's separated and that's the way it should be because students in grade 7 and 8 are not taking the same examination as the 9th grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and so on. So, they're not taking some of the APs, they're not taking some of the Regents. But when we send the grade to the state as one school, we get penalized for it and I don't think it's fair to our students and our community and our teachers that are working very hard to support our students. So, what we have done is creating two separate beds codes. So, on paper, you will see high school 9 through 12 and then you will see Oyster Bay 7 and 8 separated. I think this is, is going to reflect the hard work that our community, our students are doing and I think will, in the long run, will be beneficial for all of us. One last word. Tonight, you will see a very important appointment. We have conducted a search and I'm very proud to recommend to the board the appointment of our new Deputy Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Raynor. I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Raynor for many years and I know that she's a wonderful wife, a mom of three beautiful children and she will bring to Oyster Bay the many years of dedication, passion, knowledge that would allow us to continue to move our district forward. Maureen, I know that we have to wait for the vote, hopefully it goes the way I planned, but I'm looking forward to seeing you empowering our students, our staff, and our community to achieve excellence. I'm happy to have you back on my team. At this point, I will ask Mr. Fermano to come to the podium and share the amazing accomplishment of our artist, but before you do that, Mr. Fermano, I want to thank you for all the work that you have done throughout the musicals, the band, the cavalcade, the artwork. You give the community and the parents the opportunity to enjoy the great work that we have, the great students that we have. Nothing stopped us and I just, on behalf of the board and the entire team, I want to thank you. I know it took a lot of hours. I used to see you running, didn't like the video, go back and do it again, but it's been truly a pleasure and the community really enjoyed that and I heard some wonderful feedback. So, thank you on behalf of the entire community.
Thank you very much for that. So, good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Yanni, Dr. Mohol, Mr. Cipriani, and our community watching from home. I'm here tonight to recognize our skilled art students. I will present a slideshow of students' artwork that have been displayed at the ASA Art Supervisors Association All County Art Exhibit, which can be found on the district Fine and Performing Arts website, also Go Ape through the Art League of Long Island, and recognize the students who entered into the Long Island's Best Young Artists at the Hexer Museum. I would first like to recognize two seniors. Our first senior was not able to attend today, but I will recognize her this evening. Her name's Juilliard Wu. Juilliard is the Senior Scholarship winner representing our district for the ASA All County Exhibit. And I would also like to recognize Kaylee Weebolt. Kaylee's work is currently being displayed at the Hexer Museum. She is one of 83 students out of 331 young artists whose work, whose juried work is being displayed at the Hexer Museum. And there's also, right now, the Hexer Museum has a virtual link, has a link to all the artwork virtually, which will also be posted on our district website for you to see, and you'll also see it in the slideshow. Before I present the slideshow and we take a little photo opportunity, I'd like to invite all of you to see the Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School's Virtual Art Gallery, which will be on display tomorrow, as well as the Vernon and High School Virtual Art Galleries, which will go live next month. And those links will be on the Fine and Performing Arts website and on the district website. The arts are a vital part of social and emotional learning and they provide a way for students to express themselves and give voice to their experiences. I want to thank Ms. Brusman, Ms. Crowley, Ms. Rendazzo, Ms. Miley, and Mr. Boris for providing a quality art education that impacts positive cognitive and social development. So, after this photo opportunity, you will then see a slideshow of students that are being recognized for their achievement in art.
Thank you.
Beautiful artwork, beautiful. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, so, do we want to move on now to the vote on the BOC's budget?
Yeah.
No, there was no correspondence. Oh, you do have two?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Again, you want to read the correspondence? Perfect.
We have two correspondents. 317, an email from Mark Goldschmidt about varsity baseball, and 420, an email from Richard Siegelman, April 2021 issue of the Arena by Teddy Roosevelt Association.
Thank you, Mr. Crown. Okay, so I'll turn it over to you for the BOC's vote.
So, the BOC's budget vote, Darlene, what do we have? I know that Todd, who?
Dr. Yanni.
Yeah.
Myself and Mr. Jibosi are on the committee for the BOC's budget. So, I just, you know, with some numbers that, listening to the meeting and going back and looking at, I think it's a 1.9% increase for '21-'22. The total is $23,234,809, that's the administrative, and then the total budget is 399, it's $23,234,809, total is $399,378,598. And it's a 1.9% increase for the budget and then our aid is $736,015. Mr. Cipriani, you have those numbers or do you have those numbers for the BOC's budgets? You don't? I have the book here, I'll give it to you at the end. And then there's three spots, they were unopposed, it should be the same three people.
So, it's a roll call vote on this one? Is it a roll call vote? No? Okay.
So, can we just pass the resolution? Okay, so it looks like it's,
It's part of the resolution.
It's under 9C, new business?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll just leave it there till?
Thank you, Mr. Crown and Mr. Jibosi.
Okay, now we have the approval of the minutes for the workshop meeting, March 2, 2021, and March 16, 2021.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we can move on to the Business Facilities Report. Dr. Yanni?
So, this is Personnel Action. Do we have the appointment of?
No, no, isn't there, do you have anything under the Business Facilities Report or do we don't?
Uh, no.
No, okay. So, now we can move on to the Personnel Actions. Professional Personnel, resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District, hereby approves the following professional personnel and civil service personnel resolutions as listed. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, a quick question, incorporating local history, that sounds interesting. What is that?
Those are just a few lessons we're going to start to incorporate where Dr. Pescara is working with Rainham Hall and the Oyster Bay Historical Society and the Teddy Roosevelt Association to find some examples that we can tuck in. They're not going to take away from the main curriculum, but just to make those connections so that students have a sense of the role Oyster Bay was playing in the big picture.
That's great. Thank you.
We're really excited about it. I think it's groundbreaking work.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries and welcome, Ms. Raynor.
Congratulations.
Let's move on to Business Actions. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District, hereby approves the following business resolutions as listed. Do I have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Special Services, resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District, hereby approves the following Special Services resolutions as listed. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New Business, resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District, hereby approves the following new business resolutions as listed. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I, the scholarship fund, is that a donation from a family or some individuals? Wow. Oh, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There's a discussion session, but I don't know if there's anything there. Okay. And the Friday packet, any questions on the Friday packet? Oh, I have a question. The opt-outs that you received, have you, has you received any others or, because it's looked like they're pretty reasonable right now?
Yeah, the number, today we just had the 6th grade.
6th grade.
And it was out of 104 students, we had 17 and there were 10 in more learner, right? One student coming in. So, you know, kind of, I mean, last year, last year we didn't have it, we had the year before, but right now is, the number seems to be, the exam is completely different, it's one day and.
Right, it's much shorter, the exam.
Yep, yep. And they don't count, so it really,
Yep, they don't, yep.
It really doesn't have an impact.
Ms. Kowalski?
Yes.
From last year's numbers to this year's, they've been going down pretty.
Yeah, so last year we didn't have, I believe the year before we were at 35%, right?
Right.
I brought with me the ELA numbers only, which were 32%.
Right, so it is going down, but we still need it under 5%, right?
Right.
I mean, that's what, that's what the state's requiring, so that we're not a target school district.
And I'm sorry, what is our opt-out percentage this year?
So far, six, right now, we only have 17 reviews out of 104, so we're talking about 16% roughly, right? 16?
We're doing it a little bit differently. It's one, each day is a different grade, so the grades end up averaging out differently. So, we'll see what happens as we move forward. Tomorrow will be 5th.
So we'll see what happens as we move forward. Tomorrow will be 5th grade and so on. Typically, we're giving more tests on the same day, so we have the number, a complete view much more quickly.
Any other questions on the Friday packet? Okay, do I, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting and go into executive for labor or employment and contract discussions?
Personnel, yeah.
Personnel? Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.